All right, good evening. This work session of the ISD 279 School Board is being held in the Forum Room of the Educational Service Center 11293rd Avenue North in Maple Grove on Tuesday, January 7th, 2025. The work session is being audio recorded. The recording will be made available on the district website within two business days after the work session is ended. With regard to the audio recording, our communication staff has asked that we share a friendly reminder that side conversations during the work session are picked up by the recorder and can affect sound quality. Also, conversations during transitions between agenda items are on the recording as well. The intent of the school board work session is to allow for school board discussion of topics. Work sessions do not include an opportunity for audience members to address the board. To acknowledge attendance this evening, I'll ask that all present at the table state their name, starting with a person to the left.
Director Tanya Pitts, school board member.
Yvonne Schwartz-Lynn, Executive Director of HR.
Director Keith Tate, school board member.
Sarah Mitchell, school board member.
Kelly Parkard, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Schools.
Steve Phyllis, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools.
Brian Bass, Assistant Superintendent for Equity and Achievement.
John Morsted, Executive Director of Finance and Operations.
Brian Seaberson-Hall, Executive Director of Community Engagement.
Kaye Bellal, Executive Director of Community Relations.
Anthony Patterson, Executive Director of Technology.
David Moore, General Counsel.
Director Erica Foster, school board member.
I'm Kelsey Dawson, school board member.
Superintendent Kim Heil.
And I, Thomas Brooks, school board member and present. The purpose of school board work sessions is to build trust and teamwork, to exchange information, and when applicable, to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making in regular board meetings. Dr. Heil, would you please share your check?
Thank you, Vice Chair Thomas. Welcome, everyone, and welcome to our new school board of members. We're so excited to have you here. One of our goals with our work session that may have changed over the last year or so is for us to have an informative collaborative discussion where we're all learning from each other. So please feel comfortable if there's questions or if there's something that you want to ask us. Our whole goal here is to share information but also to receive information back. So I'm going to apologize to our new school board members. We're going into some heavy topics for the first time. So get your seatbelts ready and we're going to get started. So we'll start out with enrollment trend information with John Morsted.
Thank you, Dr. Heil. So enrollment trends are viewed annually at this time of year in order to project enrollment for the next fiscal year and to make new five-year enrollment projections. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide an overview of enrollment trends used in making five-year enrollment projections. These projections are important for decision-making regarding budgeting and staffing with the upcoming school year. All the data we'll look at tonight is based on our November 1st, 2024 enrollment counts. The first two charts include pre-K numbers, which give a picture of the total comprehensive enrollment. Other than these two, the remainder of the charts will focus simply on K through 12 enrollment. Overall district enrollment for fiscal year 2025, the current year, which includes pre-K through 12th grade, exceeds the 2024 actual enrollment by about 310 students or 1.5%. It's the column on the far right. Additionally, our K-12 enrollment of 20,539 was within 42 students, just under our projection from last fall, or approximately 2/10 of 1% less than the projection. In addition to students coming into Osseo schools from other public options, school choice means that some Osseo area residents choose options outside of our district. Please note that for fiscal year 2025, data is preliminary because, again, it reflects November information and that it changes on actually almost a daily basis. But we will true it up so that the previous years are true to year-end data, but the current year is just preliminary. So the chart here shows our fall enrollment over the last five years broken out by secondary, elementary and secondary grade levels. The red line shows students served in secondary grades 6 through 12, and the blue line shows K through 5. Typically, a thorough analysis of our five-year history trend is a key component in projecting future enrollment. Overall, the past several years, we've seen enrollment stabilize and grow particularly at the secondary level, with the exception of the pandemic year. Here we're kind of at the very end of that, showing it on the graphs, and enrollment is trending up for both elementary and secondary. Minnesota has an open enrollment option program, commonly known as, or enrollment option program commonly known as, open enrollment, and this can make choices to enroll our students in public schools that are not the school district where they reside. Osseo Schools has consistently enrolled between 1,300 and 1,700 students from other Minnesota school districts annually. Our overall open enrollment increased by 64 students to 1,709 this year. It represents 8.5% of the school district's total enrollment. The vast majority of these students come from Anoka, Hennepin, Robbinsdale, Minneapolis, and Brooklyn Center. We do lose more students to Anoka, Hennepin, Brooklyn Center, and Fridley, but we gained from Buffalo, Minneapolis, and Robbinsdale. Just note, the open enrollment numbers typically grow throughout the year, so we'll continue to, again, monitor these levels as we progress. Probably easier to see this in your packet, but there's two additional documents to dig a little bit deeper into actual enrollment versus how we did versus how we ended last year and also versus projection. The first is the actual variance. This shows the breakdown at each school and grade level of enrollment from fall of '25 compared to the final '24 enrollment. You'll see that the green in the total, the bottom right-hand corner of the page, that indicates 331 student increase over the end of the previous year. The second chart highlights actual enrollment versus what we projected for the current year. If this cell's in red, it shows an enrollment of 10 or more students below projection, and green is 10 or more above projection, again, by building by grade. Overall, we were, again, under, just under projection by about 42 students or 2/10 of Here you can see the biggest impact on enrollment came at the senior high and our alternative options. We came in 42 students below projection overall K-12, 60 above at the senior high, 21 below at the middle school, 5 above at the elementary, and then 102 below in a combination of OEC, the Osseo Education Center Transition Program, OALC, the Alternative Learning Center, and 279 Online. While we see consistent gains across the district, there were a couple of schools that came in above projections by at least 10 students, which include Edinburgh at 22, Garden City at 17, Palmer Lake at 32, Rice Lake at 23, Weaver Lake at 14, Osseo Senior at 43, and Park Center Senior at 80 students. Osseo Schools' residents choosing to attend other public school options are listed here. Open enrollment into other districts decreased noticeably over prior year by 191 students Enrollment into charter schools also increased a little bit by about 117 students to 3,902. This is actually the first notable decrease we've seen in open enrollment out since 2011. It's even before that, as far back as I could track the numbers. So a good change for this year. Families who choose public schools, of those families who choose public schools, 74.4% of our resident students are choosing Osseo area schools. This can be referred to as our resident capture rate. So for Osseo area schools, in the current year, we estimate we're capturing almost three out of every four students whose families choose a public school option. This has been holding pretty steady, right around 74% for the last four years, although we did see about a half a percent increase for this year over the previous year. Next couple of slides will provide a bit more detail about specific public school options. Where are the students going? This slide contains a list of all Minnesota school districts that enroll 60 or more students from Osseo area schools, or school students that reside in Osseo area schools. Because choice can go both ways, the first four columns show net gain or loss for Osseo in the previous three years and then the FY '25. So we, again, are still showing a net loss, but our number for this year is a net loss of 775 students, down from 809 the previous year and 916 the year prior to that. And you can kind of see the bigger gains and losses on the list of where the kids are coming from. This slide contains a list of public charter schools, again, which 60 or more Osseo school area school residents attend. Enrollment has grown over time at most of these charter schools. Parnassus is the largest school we lose residents to, 907, down a little bit this year by about 6 students. Athlos is the largest outlier in this. We lost 70 additional students to Athlos this year than we did previous, and if you look at their trend, it's really jumped up and down. So 22 is 535, then it went down to 487, then down to 406, and now came back up. So not 100% sure what caused 70 kids to move there, but again, as we uncover the details and we turn around and look at those opportunities and work with community relations to dig deeper into finding out the why and finding out who we can, again, capture and keep within our own schools. Overall, our students' loss to these top 10 charter schools increased by about 137 students this year. So while our open enrollment out and private school enrollments decreased, our charter school and homeschool enrollments increased. Altogether, we still gained a net of 122 more students versus last year in those areas. Osseo area schools' residents choosing to attend private or home schools make up 2,381 students in the current year, a decrease of about 145 students. Interestingly, enrollment in private schools decreased by 145, while homeschool increased by 33. The big private schools where we see most of the students go, Maranatha, is 304 students. That is down 45 students from the previous year. St. Vincent, 281 up 2. A lot of them are heritage Christian, about 240 students up 7. Providence Academy, 159, down 13. Ave Maria in Maple Grove, which is a pre-K through 8 Catholic school, 72 students, down Got a few more on the list. The general category of other non-public schools, we lose where it's onesie-twosie, so it falls kind of beneath our list, we lose about 135 students, again, down 17 over the previous year. It is important to note that one of the schools did close, St. Alphonse closed this summer, and so some of those students were, we received, and then were those students back, and others made choices to go to other privates. This chart shows the overall resident capture rate. So this is public-private, doesn't matter what your choice is. So you're a resident of Osseo area schools, today 68% for the current year of those students that reside within our area choose to attend Osseo area schools. This is the first increase we've seen in the past five years of note. The most recent five years, we're holding at about 67%, and then the four years prior to that were about 70. So we're hoping we've turned kind of plateaued at the bottom and are starting our way back Kindergarten, we'll talk a little bit about kindergarten. It is historically the most difficult grade to provide an enrollment projection for. In the past, we used the Hennepin County live birth number as a good indicator of our kindergarten enrollment. So traditionally, our district residents equate to somewhere between 15 and 16% of the live births of kindergarten students in Hennepin County. So you can see a decrease of 6.66% for this year. Our own kindergarten numbers decreased, as did kindergarten enrollment in charters, privates, and open enrollment out. This data is a good representation of the overall picture of declining enrollment across the state, just a declining population. We're consistently seeing smaller incoming kindergarten classes than we are seeing outgoing senior classes that they're replacing. We take this information and apply our capture rates and historical trends to come up with a kindergarten enrollment projection for the next year. Now, normally, the kindergarten capture rate is not a slide I'm very proud to show, but today's a different day. Normally, this isn't a great number. Normally, we have been coming in in that 58, 59% of every kindergarten, or every kindergarten student available, we would get coming to us. That's not a great number. However, our kindergarten capture rate currently has moved to 61.4% of our available kindergarten students this year. This is a notable increase of 2.6% higher than the previous year, and I would like to call out our team and Kay and her team from community relations, who've made a very pointed effort to market for kindergarten for us. I think this is a direct result of that. We are simply seeing more students. So a huge thank you to Kay and her team for making that happen and helping us retain the students that live in our district. All of the trend information we compiled together to use to create a five-year enrollment projection. Now, the numbers I'm going to show you here that are on the screen are probably different than what you have in your packet because I found a little minor error and had to make some corrections today. So what's on the screen is correct, and I will happily send you what this is, but these are the numbers we're going to talk about. Couple points of interest over, our historical data shows trends over the past few years, which we talked about earlier. Hennepin County birth data, so typically, you're looking at birth data from five years ago. So the example I'll give you is for fiscal year '26, we use birth data from calendar year 2020. What happened in calendar year 2020, COVID? The Hennepin County births, if you look at that number, it's the very top one of the orange column, decreased by 2,300 less births in Hennepin County that year alone. So this is the first year that those kids are coming into kindergarten is this coming fall. So we're starting to see, and originally, I think, when we first looked at it, that number was north of 1,000 kids less. Now, it's come down because of other growths and things within our district are kind of covering it. The other piece that we don't know here is Hennepin County is a pretty large county. We have no idea within Hennepin County where the births actually lie. We could be up 10% in our district, and Bloomington could be down 10. We just don't know because the county won't provide us any detail specifically beyond county borders. So we have to do our best guess based on those percentages in history to kind of tell us 15, 16% is where we're going to come in. That birth rate, by the way, for 2020 to 13130 is a more than 50-year low. So it's a big change in the number. And as you see, what's going up for the next year is the 1423, 144, and through fiscal '29, those are real numbers. The very last number for fiscal '30 is an estimate. But, you know, we were in the high 16s and we're in the 14s and 13s. So again, good example of what a declining population actually looks like when it starts to matriculate in the schools. So finally, getting to the nitty-gritty here, the bottom line, if you're going down our orange column, shows you predicted growth of 383 students for next year, which is about a 1.9% increase. We are projecting a decline of 85 students the following year, and then kind of a little dip, and then starting back up anywhere between 4 and 9% over the next three years. Why the dip? The biggest change is, number one, in fiscal '27, you have two years of the low birth years for COVID, and we're actually, we have a kind of historically high projected senior class for next year at 2,035 students, and so that will graduate out. So we're graduating out a big class and bringing in a smaller kindergarten in first grade. So we make up a lot of it with growth, but not quite all of it. This chart depicts the same information we just looked at on the trend line data. So you see the slight increase rolling through in secondary enrollment and a similar decline for elementary enrollment typically, again, that large birth part is mixed in there. As the board knows, growth data is one of the most important items utilized by the ECHMAC or Enrollment Capacity Management Advisory Committee, and they uses that information to make recommendations about capacity needs and opportunities in coming years. Indications from the city of Maple Grove and all of our cities are that development in, within the district is accelerating, specifically in the northwest area, but in other places as well. We're currently aware of over 5,700 new housing units that are either in one of the stages of development and more to come. And we also are aware of another 1,200 housing units that don't fall within our border but fall within a mile of one of our borders. So again, another potential stressor that could come to our system that we're just monitoring. ECHMAC will be receiving detailed information on this and other projected residential growth at their next meeting, and we've incorporated the growth information into these projections. However, there are certain triggers that, again, accelerate things. For the example, if you drive on Highway 610 and you see the construction over 94, that when completed will create another artery in the northwest corridor of Maple Grove, which makes easier access to those farms and fields that are out there right now. That in tandem with the Dayton Parkway extension that was completed just a couple of years ago, you're starting to have easier access to that area, which is going to spur development, and it will just come faster and faster. So over the next coming weeks, we will finalize our grade level and site level enrollment projections. We sent the detailed data for each building today. They all received that information. And these projections will be used to prepare our revenue budgets and staffing allocations that we will use to inform facility planning for next year. We'll continue to monitor household and economic trends carefully as we examine that data with ECHMAC. And with that, I will turn things back to Vice Chair Brooks for any questions.
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
Just a clarifying question, John Morris. Is 102 below projection at OEC, OALC, and 279 online? Is that number spread throughout? Are OEC and 279?
It's only 279.
Okay. And how many students are enrolled in 279 online?
23, 304, I don't know what that, below 300. I think our projections stay maybe a little less or close to that number is what we're projecting right now. That's a tough one to project because we started in the 900s. And then have, as people's comfort level of coming back to school has increased, we see that number go down, and they're going to a more traditional model, but there are still, you know, 300 and some students, that's still a ton of revenue for a district. And so we need to, I guess, tread carefully as we're looking at that because there's still value, but it's determining, is that the right value? So we're looking at that, and we have teams working all over on it to try to analyze and study that information, but it's definitely something we can learn.
And aren't there?
No, no, actually, OEC is up a little bit because they added another year. Transition program, it used to be 18 through 21, and as of this year, it's 18 through 22. So we actually added about 20 kids there. OALC is about the same. It fluctuates, you know, 10, 20 students up and down year to year.
And the 279 online is open to, is it to anybody in the state?
Yes. I have news we have residents in Minnesota to attend. And so we, again, utilizing Kay and her team, have done some accelerated marketing in other places to try to help drive that interest. It's, there's a lot of competition. There's a lot of other schools that are out there as well, and then there's a lot of niches that fit, and you got to find your right fit. So I think we're, our 279 team is diligently working through that, but it's still learning curve for all of us.
And just let the board know you will be receiving an update at 279 online at our March 11, excuse me, our February 11 school board work session.
The current active enrollment at 279 online is 363, so that doesn't count anybody that's in enrollment process. In addition, our supplemental online has about 150 to 200 students that are accessing courses for one or two courses online. So when we top 279 online, that's just full-time students, and we have another subset of students who are participating part-time that don't show up in these enrollment numbers.
So can, a student can, like, physically attend a school and take an online class?
So we'll have that updated ready for you February 11.
Going back to the projected trend lines graph, so I think I saw in the projections the logic behind them, but can you talk a little bit about how the, you know, our K through 5 is, you know, going one way and our, you know, 6 through 12 is going the opposite direction?
So one of the things that's really hard to show in this is, and this comes with kind of the conversation around the number of the charter schools and privates, they're not K-12, they're K-6 or K-8. So in a number of situations, we see, as you hit certain grade levels, like you hit sixth grade middle school, we see an influx of students that don't match the number of elementary students who just finished fifth grade and are moving to sixth. Same thing at ninth grade. So as you get those levels, that's where we see bigger jumps up, and you'll see a lot of people that make the decision to say, hey, I might have wanted to be at a charter school for whatever reason for this long, but now I want the activities and programs that come with a traditional high school, and so I'm going to switch back. So that happens a lot, and that's why the number tends to go the other direction.
And maybe even more so in the future is what we're thinking?
Yeah, I think more and more, we're seeing that even though we bring in a good chunk, that the class coming behind it keeps getting smaller. So if you, oops, I'll go back to here. Really, if you look at the kindergarten line going across just here, and this goes back to 2020, 1,609, and now we're at 3, you know, 1,300 in that change going into the 1278. Now, that's 300 plus less kindergartners coming into the system. And then down at our grade 12, yeah, it's going up, it was at 1,636, and it's coming across to 2,035, and then holding at 1,950, and then, you know, kind of holding in there a little bit. We still never made that gap back up, the 300 we started behind. You know, so that's kind of where the anomalies come in, and it's one of the good points of why predicting enrollment is a little bit tricky. So from our standpoint, if we can hit something like less than 2/10 of 1% on 21,000 students, I'm pretty happy with that number.
Do you ever have any realtor data as far as people moving into the district if they are coming with kids at, like, the older age?
We do. Realtors don't necessarily want to share the makeup of their clientele, but you can get some information. Sometimes it can be hard to get detail. A lot of times, they want more information from us about where the boundaries are, what schools are available, is this in this district or this school or that school? But a lot of it depends on the realtor. It's really case by case on what they're willing to share. But a lot of times, what we tend to do are have a better luck with, and we have a company called Predictive Enrollment Analytics that goes and has conversations with the developers themselves. So especially in the newer area, they're talking to them, saying, what's your, how many homes are you going to build this year? When do you think those will be occupied? And they can take those dates and start applying metrics of, we think the average single-family home has 3/10 of a kid in it, times every single-family home we have. And they start applying that information and saying, this is what we think your enrollment is going to increase by. So they're out on the streets with planning commissions, talking to those organizations to say, what are you actually building? Hey, insurance rate or interest rates went up a lot last year, so we're going to pull back on what we thought development was going to be just because houses weren't selling. Well, now the interest rates were going down, so we're starting to see, you know, you go out to the Evanswood area where the new school will be next to, that is incredibly different from not even a year ago till now. You know, they were, they were starting a town home, and now there's 15 buildings that are just a town. And that doesn't include the 100 and some single-family homes that are now up when there were 20. So that it's spread and it's moving fast, and we're right in line and next to it. So knowing that there are developments wrapping around us already on the other side, it's just going to continue.
But not everybody's on track to buy a home. So how do you, like, you know, with the, you know, in Brooklyn Park, the closing of or whatever's happening with Huntington, like, how does that impact us? Or you talked about, like, I mean, I also wonder about our populations that, you know, aren't homeowners and they're renters or they're looking for, they're affordable housing or things like that. Like, how do you come for that? And when you talk about the 5,700 new housing units, and you mentioned Maple Grove, but that isn't?
That's everything. That's Brooklyn Park.
Right. So like, where, that's a lot of housing units. Are they apartments? Are they, do you know? Like, are they?
Yeah, we have the full breakdown. The 5,700 is all housing units. So that includes apartments, and we actually break it down. We're doing our survey and our analytics to single-family home, multifamily home, town home, and apartments. And then we'll even break apartments into market rate apartments and subsidized apartments.
I'm just curious because obviously, there's housing disparities in the state, significant and very stark. And I'm just wondering how we're addressing, and kind of like to my, you know, kind of connected is just, you know, when you talked about K, there you go, doing marketing and outreach for kindergarten, like, you know, how do you start to, what are you doing to, like, really attract, you know, our diverse populations to ensure that, you know, ensure that, you know, we're really meeting the needs and kind of understanding what those needs are for our families, or what attracts our families? Like, obviously you've had success, so I'm just kind of curious also what's worked.
One of the new things that we did this year, as opposed to years previously, we did a school choice fair, which was heavily attended and was quite a success. So not just focusing even on kindergarten, but all of our grade levels to make sure people know about all the opportunities that are available in our school district. So I think we've had some great success with that, and we are continually trying to ask people, like, and decipher, like, what it is that attracts, right? We know we have some unique programs and really centering those as well. We have magnet opportunities throughout the district, all the CTE programs that we have going on, right? Like, pulling out some of those unique things to try to get people to connect with our district and know about what those are, so that they can do what's best for their families.
Yeah, and we even had a little bump in the high school. I think Sage Academy on 85th closed on the Wednesday before the first day of school, which was a charter high school, you know, so we probably had, gosh. Well, we learned about it at about 9:30, and at the enrollment sign-in.
Wow.
And families showed up because they just got a key from their principal that the school was closing that day. But, you know, we probably picked up 30 kids just that week from Sage closing on 85th. So, you know, that was back to Keith's question, I think, on like the high school level. Some, in that event, there was a charter that was high school. So that was an anomaly with that one closed. So there's kind of, it can be ever-changing with kind of the level of charters we have in the district too with enrollments. A lot, all these questions are factors into enrollment, it seems like.
John had a similar question to Dr. Prince, more along the lines of home sales. It seems like we rely heavily on development numbers in the northwest part of the district for enrollment projections, but I'm wondering what data we have access to in terms of home sales throughout the rest of the district? And in particular, I'm just thinking about all of the cities, all of the other cities in the metro that don't have the same development challenges that we have. Like, how are they projecting their enrollment numbers?
We don't necessarily look at specific home sale data into the enrollment because typically, when I, when I, this is going back a little ways, when I worked in Eden Prairie, they had kind of finished their big growth stick, and we're just into that. Sales versus turning over property, and we're studying it, and what they basically found is it came a wash. It was a non-material difference of the number of people leaving versus the number of people coming in because they were filling each other's homes. So it just became, number one, it just became not really worth the time and effort to try to track it. And in most places that I've talked to in other districts, they, they might look for, if there's suddenly a whole bunch of homes that go up for sale in an area, and that's where they're, that comes to your relationship with the Realtors around you to say, hey, what are you seeing that's unusual? Well, they'll help you find that trend, or, you know, hey, there's, you know, there's going to be a redevelopment in this area that doesn't have a lot of growth, and so you're starting to see all the homes sell, but this is what's going to come in. But it's not a lot, and we've tried to look at it a little bit in a couple of districts I've had in the past, but just knowing that it's typically very minimal, it's not typically worth the effort to dig deep into that. So just being honest.
On the slide about our overall capture rate, what is the typical, how do we compare to surrounding districts? And then what's your goal for that?
We're definitely less than surrounding districts. We have an abundance of options available. I think, I don't have on this, I have to go look back at previous years because we actually had to count, I think it was last year, the number of charter schools and the number of private schools that our students attend. And it was, I want to say it was something like 93 different private schools and 120-some charter. It was, it was well over 200 schools total that we compete with. That doesn't count the public schools around us, or now you throw in the online schools that can reach from anywhere within the state. So our capture rate has been declining. You know, at one point, this district had almost 25,000 students, and we're in, you know, the mid-20,000 range right now. But competition is competition, and there's kind of always been unwritten rules that schools don't steal from other schools. No, we apparently told the charter schools in the private central, but they told us. And so it's really just now that we're starting to push back a little bit and say, hey, we want to keep our kids, and so we want to show people that we are the choice destination, and we want you to come here. And that's really what Kay's team is starting to teach people is, here's why you want to choose Osco Schools versus these other ones. There's always going to be the exceptions, and that's okay. I mean, it's okay to have choice, I think it's healthy. But at the same time, we want to make sure we're offering the best product we can offer.
What is the kind of standard goal for that, for capture rate?
I would, yeah, specifically on that. So it should be at least in the low 70s for our capture rates. That's a housing number, so I would say we're a little below what a housing number should be. So all the things that we've been telling our school leaders is that, just that we need to do.
And I think building a better future is going to help us with that. It's just at Brooklyn Middle, and when you look at the renovations, I don't think that our community has, have been in our schools, honestly, in some time to see what the buildings are like, what we're offering. So I think continuing to lean into the work that we're doing and kind of reselling our schools to our local communities where we know that we have the greater competition, I think will shift, start to shift things.
I've got another question, I guess. Do we have any, because we're starting with kindergarten, do we have any information as far as the folks that start with pre-K and how many of those, you know?
I mean, don't track or project pre-K. It's something that I think maybe we need to talk about, but we haven't in the past. It's kind of been hard because if you really look back, you know, like, the VP pre-K program only came on a handful of years ago. It hasn't been, what, 17, 18 somewhere in there?
Seven years.
Seven?
About seven years.
Prior to that, you know, we, even earlier, we, kindergarten wasn't even a full-time program. It was a part-time program. So we haven't, we really only tracked kindergarten because that's where funding always came from, so that's what was driving enrollment. Where now that in the last few years, some funding has come with those other positions, we don't, we don't project it, but we're always looking at what we have. And then again, we have all the trend data to be able to say, this is, this is where we think that number's going to come. And we do, within the business office, apply that into our budget formula list to make sure that we are capturing that information, but we just don't necessarily mix it into this.
And does it reflect in our capacities, I'm sorry, for each building then?
Yes.
Did you want to share your board's information?
One thing I think we can do is, I think our last boardwork session, we had a couple of questions around like pre-K open slots, or it's something around that. And our four-star program does keep retention from four-star to kindergarten numbers. So I think we should pull that, I'm going to opt in to pulling that for VPK as well as ECFP. I don't know what those numbers are going to be. I do know that the four-star numbers are, the last two years, 90% and 92% of our kids who attended four-star attended kindergarten, which is a heck of a lot higher than 58% capture rate, right? Now, I don't know the numbers for VPK and ECFP, but when Christie Johnson from four-star gave me those numbers, right away it was like, oh, let's just add this, just like we collect TS Gold Evaluation at the end of our four-year-old programming, let's collect retention rate to kindergarten. And then maybe even try to find out some of the why. Clearly, some of these families are motivated to get into the school district, but they're not automatically in the pre-K that they're going to go to kindergarten in either, necessarily. So the four-star numbers were highly encouraging, right? That's a really big percentage, but even if, even if they're 10% higher than the average capture rate for kindergarten, that's something worth pursuing, the earlier you give them in, the later, so. No promises that they'll all be at 90%, but if, after, like I said, after receiving that information, it feels like a good thing to add to our metrics, how many of the kids who get involved in four-year-old programming continue on in kindergarten, especially since that's a lagging capture grade level in this district.
So that's something that we, from a marketing standpoint, have jumped on. Like, we have connections, right, with those early childhood programs? So for example, for the school choice fair, we reach out to all of those connections that we can, make sure they have the information they needed, and a lot of them attend the fair. We reach, we know that for sure that if we can get them at a younger age, in the younger, even preschool, right? They're going to tend, they tend to stay with us, so that's our hope with preschool and kindergarten.
And how much easier is that the enrollment process once you're in four-star? Or any of the pre-K programs?
Well, it's, it's not easier if you're in four-star because that's separate from, but the VPKers are actually enrolled in the school district, so they don't have to enroll again in kindergarten. Four-star is through community education, so it's a registration, not an enrollment. And so is ECFP. So there is some, it's a good question, Thomas. There are some distinctions between the four-year-old program that you show up. So VPK, again, is very nice because, especially if you get into your home attendance VPK, then you don't have to do like an in-district transfer, for example. So you just continue, you've already started at your home school as a pre-Ker. So that's really slick, and we like that, that families are already enrolled when they start VPK. And it helps, makes it easier to alert people on emergency weather days. Because they're enrollment, just a side note. Because we have to do another process for the kids in the other programs, right? So, but it's nice to get them, that way they're all set up. They're in ParentView, they're in Mars, they're on everything, right? So that's a nice system.
I think the big thing to note about the separation there is VPK gets reported to the state through first data, through K, like, K through 12, where four-star is not a state-reported program. So that's why they don't go through enrollment process. Pre-K students get a student ID, and they're in the full reporting process for state reporting.
Thank you. Do you have to turn over?
All right. Okay, thank you. So we're going to move on to our next presentation, is what we wanted to share with the board, our draft vision card update. So that's going to be shared with myself, by myself today, with Dr. Bass as well, as well with Kay Belilla, and anytime, because it's a work of the entire cabinet that they may jump in as well. So in our pursuit, it never goes away, for continuous improvement in having Nicole about our weekend being highly effective and efficient school district, that we're presenting to the board to see that our work in refining our current vision card metrics. So the reason and the purpose behind us refining our vision cards is dressed in need to streamline our actual metrics and to enhance clarity and alignment with what our strategic priorities are. So basically, our goal this evening with the board is to share what that refinement process has been for our vision cards, as well as the opportunity for the board to give us input for further considerations. So first of all, we want to acknowledge our new school board members that we have here this evening, and some of our new school board members, they do not have all of the necessary background knowledge they may need to have on our vision cards. So we will be presenting to our new school board members, onboarding opportunity to meet and get more detailed information around our vision cards and how those original metrics came about. So we don't want you to come and feel like you're not getting a gold star because you don't know what's going on, but we will provide time for you to get all of the personal detail information that you need for that. We also want to share with some of our new school board members that our vision cards are reported out throughout the year. So this is just not a one, drive-by, and we're done. So you'll get more information throughout the year on our vision cards and our metrics. So here, so what is the role of our vision cards? So basically, our vision cards provide us with opportunity to assess our progress of our district goals and our priorities. So in using various sources of data, we're able to measure our success toward meeting our goals and where are our areas of growth that are still needed in order to achieve success toward our strategic priorities that have been set by the board. So our strategic plan was actually adopted back and approved in December of '21. So in reviewing the strategic priorities over the last year, it became really apparent that we needed to intentionally take some time and look at and take some weight off of our system. So how we went about doing that, this has been done through us really focusing on what are the main areas that we need to address and what has become distractors from us meeting the main goal of what we want to meet. Our next goal was for us to ensure that we had alignment, and we do that through the three Cs, which is consistency in what we do in the district, having connection between all of our sites and our departments, and coherence in our institution, understanding the why and the priorities behind what we do and why we need to do it. And in turn, from that is having action and being intentional in our work in what we need to do, and making sure that what we're doing is being done with fidelity, and that we don't have too many distractors coming in and taking our attention off on what needs to be done in our district. Then, of course, coming back and having measurement and choosing what is the correct measurement to ensure that we're getting the success and the growth that we need. So how we go about doing that is literally for our next one, because it's a beautiful picture, if you want to go to the next one, Brian, it's our babies. So literally, it's all about our scholars from the time that they hit the nature center at our review, all the way through the program until when they leave us. So one of the goals that personally that I have is for Osco Area School District, how do we go about becoming the best place to learn? And how do we come about becoming the best place to work? Because it's for both, it's for our students and for our staff, which will impact our community and our, and our families. So looking at it, this is a perfect visual that we have here of how coherence is occurring in a district through having consistency, consistency and connection, through us having a really tight focus and alignment. So, of course, continued improvement guides our three-year operational plan, so that starts at the top, and that starts where the board sets priorities through governance and giving us our direction and what we want to do, the goals of what we're supposed to have in the district. So from there, just to show the tight alignment that we do have, so as a superintendent, my own personal goals go back to match what the district's strategic priorities are. Then next, we go to the cabinet. The cabinet personal goals also align to the strategic priorities, and then their departments individually create a three-year operational plan that also aligns to what the board has requested for us to follow. Then from there, we actually go to, from departments having their own three-year operational plan, we go to our sites and our schools, also develop their own three-year operational plan that is once again aligned to what the board has directed us in strategic priorities. And that goes all the way down to where our teachers set their student learning goals each year and have their own professional growth goal, which all results in focused alignment in meeting the needs of our scholars. So our refinement is needed for us to look at our system to ensure that we're meeting the goals of not only what the board has set, but the needs and the goals and the wishes of what our families have for their dreams and their goals for our kids. So our next slide is like, why do we need to refine our vision cards? So I'll let Dr. Bass go ahead and start with that.
Okay, wonderful. So as we reflected on the feedback received from board in our presentations last year, and then our cabinet conversations, debriefing the feedback you all gave us, it became clear to us that there were some things that we wanted to address within the vision cards. And so some of the themes that drove our why for wanting to refine included trying to reduce redundancy. The board receives an annual presentation on the world's best workforce, which is required by the state of Minnesota, and also an annual presentation on our achievement integration progress. And so those are things where we were having metrics over there, and then also duplicating those metrics in our vision cards. And so we wanted to reduce some of that duplicative reporting data that you all receive. It can be a lot of data. It can feel overwhelming at times when we're seeing so much data presented at one time. And is it the right data that provides a clear story of the success of our scholars and the progress towards the strategic directions across our system that we need to, we need to report to the board and to our community? The next area is, so how do we get focused and prioritized? Dr. Howes spoke to taking weight off the system. How do we get, how do we drill down to those things that are most influencing the achievement data that we most want to see influenced and impacted with our, with our highly-directed resources? And then the last one, as Dr. Howes spoke to, is again lifting the weight off of the system. And if you have that many things that are priority, what's really getting prioritized, right? So really trying to narrow the focus. So then our goal there on the slide, which I don't, I don't want to, before you all have that opportunity to see this, but you see what our goal is, is trying to provide you with meaningful data that tells a clear story of our, our success and progress towards the achievement of the strategic directions that you all have set for us going back to December 2021. So here's what our refinement process looked like. It included these four big steps, reviewing those vision cards that were attached on your board packet. So we reviewed those as a cabinet and then we, we engaged in this process called Ducky, drop, add, keep and improve. And through that process, we began to prioritize and categorize metrics. We're going to show you some, some evidence and artifacts of that work. And then we gathered some themes from these discussions that we then got to that four step, which is some recommendations we want to make to our data and assessment team and our department of learning achievement that will partner with us to populate and update the vision cards for you later this spring. So, so we're in one of these conversations reviewing metrics. And there's like this aha moment that we have as a cabinet when we're engaged in this conversation and it emerged these questions that became critical ways of framing our thinking. So as we, as we look and look and study each of these vision cards, we're saying to ourselves, okay, wait a second, we're noticing a pattern here. So some of these look redundant, right? We shared in other places. Some of these look like data that are internal to the system. And then some of these look like, yeah, this is what we want to share with the board and to the public. And so we started to then have this conversation where we framed it. Okay, so there's data that we want to go up and out to the board and public. And then there's work that we need to prioritize internally, data that we need to look at internally to inform that we're on track for what we want to report out to the community. So these two, these two, the, the questions underneath each became pivotal and how we looked at each card to say, okay, that first question under up and out, what does the board and public need to know to show progress on the strategic plans? That becomes a serious focus question force. And so we look at that card and we say, okay, are these the metrics that, that answer that question force? If not, then they become ones that we recommend to be dropped. Not dropped, brought from our, our use internally, but dropped from reporting out of and out. And then as you look at the down and in, that second question, what needs to be shared down and in so that principals, administrators and school program staff know how they are doing and can make, can make adjustments if needed to their site department operational plans to show that tight alignment to showing improvement and impact on what we want to see show up in our achievement data. So this was, I get kind of geeky on this one just because it was such a great conversation. It was like, finally, we got this clarity, we got this way of framing how we look at each of, each of the vision cards so that we're giving you the data that tells a meaningful story and we have the data that we need to look at to, to track and monitor internally. Is that, okay. So here are some of the themes that came out of our conversation across all five vision cards. So we, we use remove instead of drop, but it's drop, add, keep and prove. And so under remove, again, going back to those questions of what's up and out? Is it repetitive? Is it taking weight off the system, right? So those are some of the things that led to how we sorted some of this information. So you see in remove, removing data that's also in the world's best workforce and achievement integration, some of that MCA and dropout data, you get, you get plenty of visibility on those pieces. And then also some of the operational details like cybersecurity metrics and other things that will move to other reports. When we talk about adding, Kay's going to touch on this a little bit later, around a, a community wide survey that we would conduct annually that gives us some even more robust information and really ensures that we've got balanced representative data across the district, around the community's feedback to us on our progress, on how we're doing in some of these measures. And then the, this one I'm really excited about, and Kay pushed really hard for this one is, is creating an exit survey for our seniors. You're really understanding if they feel prepared for their, for post secondary readiness, readiness either college or career. Then we go to keep. We know the safety and belonging is really important for our families. And so we know that, that, that those metrics related to that belonging, trust, equity, cultural equity from our student surveys, those are measures we want to continue to see. And then our graduation rates tied to college and career readiness. And then improve, we had some really strong conversations around rigorous coursework. And how do we ensure, and Kay, Kay brought this in, in the context of communication, how do we, how do we make sure we're doing well with our community at the beginning of their experience in pre K and kindergarten, in the middle of their experience, then at the end of their experience? How do we, how do we understand those, those milestones, those benchmarks across the way? And so what does that look like for rigorous coursework? Would it look like at the beginning? Would it look like in the middle? Would it look like at the end? And so we're excited to see what metrics our data and assessment team can come up with to help us tell the story of rigorous coursework and experiences around that. And then the other piece there in improve is continuing to work on and strengthen recruitment and retention of a diverse workforce and really disaggregating our data with that equity lens and that equity focus. And so Kay, I'm going to turn it over to Kay. Kay is going to talk through specifically with vision card for strategic direction C, how we went through this process and some of the, the key points. And so we'll quiet it.
Thank you, Brian. So this is an example of some of the refinement that our cabinet team has been doing with each of the strategic directions. On this particular side, like Brian said, we're looking at strategic direction C, which is to promote inclusive participation of all of our communities and provide timely, relevant and easily accessible communication. So on the left side is the existing vision card. And then the right side is what's being considered to refine it. These are the same things that Brian was mentioning of removing or dropping, adding, keeping and improving. So we went through each of those things with, in particular with C that you're seeing on the screen. So I just wanted to take a little bit of a minute on that. So it's clear there was some opportunity with strategic direction C. Some of the pieces that we felt were missing, at least on that left side of what we have right now are the quality and the effectiveness of communication. So our current card is mostly showing simply messages in or out or kind of numbers mostly. So like numbers of messages going out or number of messages received from families. So all good things to capture, but it didn't really tell that story or that experience that we're looking for. We want to really capture that entire communication experience from preschool to graduation and beyond. So we felt the need to add a survey data that focused on communication and on those questions. So when we talk about timely, relevant and easily accessible communication, right? We can center our questions directly on those pieces to really capture what is that experience? Kind of after the fact, otherwise until we talk to people and find out what those kind of reflection pieces are, we're not really sure of what the experience itself is. So we also talked about focusing and as John shared today, really focusing on those enrollment numbers to make sure there were, our capture rate is where it needs to be. And then as Brian mentioned about the, you know, asking our graduates before, upon graduation, right? Like are, do you feel like, do we reach our mission, right? Where are you, what are your plans for after graduation? So these are kind of the up and out, high level data that we want to be able to show, show you in the revised vision cards. This will better paint the picture of the progression forward here at Aseo area schools. Now, some of the data that we were talking about in regards to the numbers, like again, those are still important things. And those things will still be monitored in the years forward. But we really are going to start seeing those as like the, the down and in numbers that will make, be making adjustments to our operational plans kind of based on what those numbers are. And then this, you can really see kind of our refinement progression. So you can see with strategic direction C, kind of just based on what I've shared here, we're focusing on more of the communication with families in the, on the right side there in the football area. So just making sure that we're focusing on that piece kind of moving forward because we, we found out that that was missing a little bit in what we had. So for strategic direction A, it's going to be kind of more of a focus on belonging and safety. For B, academic rigor, college and career pathways, academic achievement and student agency. For D, resource allocation aligned to strategic priorities. And then strategic direction E, stack recruitment, retention and equitable outcomes. At this time, I'm going to turn it back over to Brian for a feedback opportunity.
So our first two outcomes was one to give you some visibility and we go into the refinement process. And then this, this part is the pause and give you some, some opportunity for some initial feedback to us. And so again, as Dr. Howell said, you're going to, you're going to have a number of occasions to provide us with feedback. And this is just some initial feedback. So we're going to do something we haven't done, returning board members at a work session. We're going to actually pause and give you all five minutes to actually choose one of the vision cards from the packet that you are interested in looking at. And then these two questions in the spirit of this presentation, what, what do you think might be missing? Or what do you think might be improved? And if you want to share out in five minutes when we come back, you can share out. Or if you want to think about this a little bit more and forward your feedback to Dr. Howell and she'll make, make sure that it's back to our team that's going to be working with, integrating all of the feedback that we provided our data and assessment team around updating and refining the vision cards. So, so again, so we're going to choose one of the, the areas, one of the strategic direction areas, a vision card. Take five minutes, what might be missing, what could be improved? And we'll come back and if you're comfortable sharing out, you can share out. If not, you want to share it in an email with Dr. Howell, you can share it that way as well. So we're going to pause for five minutes.
And then if you do it, go ahead.
I'm sorry, which page do you want to turn me on to?
It's the attachment that had the original vision cards from 23 to 24. So it was the other attachment.
Okay, thank you.
And then if you do have any questions, just feel free for our newer board members, feel free to connect with one of our board members that have been here or any of the cabinet knows, like, knows it like the back of our hand as well. So it's just an opportunity, what do you see, what are your questions? What are your aha moments, particularly for our new board members? But for our board members that have been here, what are some things you think we can improve on or what are we missing?
Director Foster, if it's helpful, I could pull this up for you on the screen.
So slides 38, like, those are the cards, right?
Whichever that, that you're interested in, just choose one and just provide some input.
This is perfect. Thank you.
All right. So I feel like that was a lot of pressure to get to.
I feel like I have the wrong answer.
Board members, any comments or feedback for staff on the vision cards?
Thank you, Thomas. I agree with you. I'm having trouble choosing. I'd like a little more time. I mean, vision card A, I mean, safety and security is still foundational. From our last work session, I'd love to focus on vision card B to build and nurture the rigorous culture of achievement. And then C, I mean, family and community engagement to increase and promote that and build trust. So I need a little more time to, we truly have to pick one.
What we can do is create a Google Doc that we can have, that you can put your input in, that we can send out for that.
I don't know. Could you pick one, Thomas? Were you looking for?
I, so I didn't pick just one, but I had kind of general themes that kind of came up just from prior vision card sessions. So one of them was just being. So I always kind of questioned the baseline percentages for some of the vision cards. But feeling comfortable with that since I've seen them so many times. I would like some sort of like consensus or just general understanding around the target percentages or the vision percentages from the board, especially if we're communicating our goals out to the public. And then the other one that I mentioned was, I saw that we're doing some senior sort of exit surveys and I don't know if we're doing anything. of exit surveys, and I don't know if we're doing anything for like incoming freshmen, but data that just speaks to higher ed enrollment or like career and job entrance, just something that speaks to sort of what they're doing when they leave here would be helpful as well, just to know if we're meeting what they hope to achieve in our system. Those are kind of the two things that kind of stuck out to me. The down and end I did, was more just wondering how we'll have access to that data, or know that it's still being tracked and progress is being made, but I also want to respect that that's going to be operational.
I think part of what we have done is provided you with more of the granularity, the more in-depth data in the monitoring report, but the card itself and the presentation would stay high level. So your reports would include some of that, some of that down and end data, but not at the high level of the cards.
So for me, it's the vision cards around culture and then achievement, and then also consolidating, there's I think some achievement data in, kind of spread out, if we can consolidate that in to say one clear picture of achievement. And that is kind of along with rigorous courses of study, kind of that whole academic achievement. But I also don't want to lose kind of the full surround, so I don't know if there might be something around participation and after school activities, because we know that can be a really critical factor to student performance. So to me, as I was looking through, and I've always wondered when we have our cards, are, what are the most highly correlated to the outcome that we're looking for, what's really addressing the root causes? I know that there's way too many variables and many we can't control when it comes to student outcomes, but if we had a, it should reflect our most finite set of these variables that we control are most correlated with the outcomes that we're seeking to accomplish. And I think it's, you know, I'd always reinforce that we want, even if the data's bad, we want, we want to see it, right? We can't know what to fix if we don't know what the real story is. So I want to make sure that as, as the teams work this, that they know that they have the full support of the board, that it's, it's, there's no condemnation for where we're at today. It's focused on what are we going to do to move forward in the future? So there should never be fear of showing something that doesn't look good, because we're here to make sure that we're doing the right thing for our students. Under the vision card A, what I wondered was, if we go back to like the center of the circle, which is the daily desired experience, are the metrics really getting at that? Because that looks, it also looks different by grade level, like elementary versus middle school versus high school, so differentiation might be needed in what we ask in questions. When we looked at our stakeholder survey in DPAC, we saw middle school is particularly suffering. And so there, the survey exit of seniors, maybe we need to have exit of middle schoolers as they're going into ninth grade. What is their middle school experience? Because that's one that we, I think, really need some work in, based on the stakeholder survey. We were looking at curriculum, so if I look at vision card B, what do we know about what our grading systems are telling us about mastery? And we saw some of the breakdown between what some of our cumulative grading outcomes are versus test scores. And of course, test scores are not everything, but how can we continue to have the right metrics on student success? I do want to retain, under culture of achievement, B four, I think we do have some good measures in there around participation in post-secondary and the career path and the credits earned, so those things are good.
Yeah, twelve by twelve.
I wonder if there should be something in there around gifted, though, the talented and gifted participation, perhaps. You know, I love promising practices. How are we measuring the effectiveness of our staff? That's another key driver in terms of student outcomes, having highly effective staff. So are we measuring that? So I'm sure I could think of some more, but was there some on my mind?
When I look at vision card A, I think that one thing I'm curious about is when we talk about a sense of belonging and engagement and success, kind of starts with students actually being in school. And so do we at all look at, you know, student attendance? And I see that it's auto school suspensions, behavior incidents, but I know Oseo is one of the districts that does a lot of referrals to the county attorney's office in terms of students being in school. It's very disproportionate amongst our population, and I'm just, and it's such a key indicator of success and a sense of belonging. And so I'm wondering if that is something that's missing in here in terms of a way to start to assess outcomes and delivery, because I, I mean, I think that, again, it's just such a strong indicator of, you're not in school, you don't have, and it's not even like being in the classroom, it's just like if you're not engaged, if you're not, have a sense of belonging, if you don't have a trusted adult, if you don't have, you know, no matter what's going on at home, there's so many stories of, you know, kids thinking that school is the safe place, but until it's not. And then, you know, and then what is that, kind of how does that impact our student population and their success in the future?
Yeah, having looked at this for a total of five minutes, I do appreciate what you're trying to do with the up and out. I kind of think of it as, you know, when you go up, you have to, it has to be kind of easily discernible, so what, right? What's the value of what this is? So I appreciate that, that's what we're, what we're trying to do, because otherwise you're just getting, yeah, lost in a ton of data, right? So I'm probably going to go through all of these and say, so what, so what's, but it's good.
So this was just the beginning, just a start, that we're starting getting information, so we'll get that Google Doc out to gather that, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm so sorry, Dr. Baker.
It's all good. So, so A is actually working on that Google Doc as we speak with, with a space for board members to drop in additional feedback. So we'll send it out to you in the next day or two, so that you all can provide the additional feedback that you want to share, so you don't feel like, you know, this is the only moment. And then, go ahead.
Sorry, I wanted to show that up in the chat.
Okay. And so what will happen is our data and assessment team and our group that's going to be looking at all the feedback that's come in, we're going to be talking about what are the, what are the types of metrics that we can pull and start looking at? Does this help us tell that story? Are these the things that connect to the things that we think are going to really have high leverage impact? Then we'll populate some vision cards that will be a pilot, and we'll present those to you all, as Dr. Howell said, in our next cycle of reporting out the vision cards later this winter and early spring through the remainder of the school year. So we'll, we'll be able to finalize those after you all have provided some additional input on the selected metrics that we're going to bring before you to say, did this get it? Do we, do we hit the mark with these? And so feedback is something that we value throughout this process, the vision cards. This is the first time we've done it in this way. The lab, this will be our third year of providing, this level of transparency with our data.
I, I did, I, so I was like a little taken back when I found out that we were redoing the vision cards. But looking at the refinement themes, like I just felt, I'm so grateful to all of you, I feel like you did listen to the board, and that's captured in those themes. Yeah, so I'm, I'm excited. So yeah, thank you for all the work.
We, we had the opportunity to attend AMSD presenter, John Tanner from Brave Ed, and he really emphasized in his presentation, superintendents around state, that what we really want to try to get to is what are the benefits of Oseo area schools' education that our community wants us to meet? So when you think about the benefits you want your child, your children to receive in our system, do, so in a portrait of what you want your child to experience at the beginning, at the middle, and at the end, the portrait of Oseo scholar, do these metrics help us understand that story and our progress towards achieving that for each of them?
Have there been any focus groups connected to that, what the community is desiring from our schools? I love focus groups.
We told our ass for that.
So we, the assistant superintendents, myself and our directors, actually met today to talk about the process. So we're actually studying a video next week that, that the American Association of School Administrators put out, that's a webinar on how to help people walk through, how to create a portrait of a, of a scholar for your district. So we're going to be leveraging some of that national best practice to lay out a process where we will have groups that will be from the community that will be working together some valuable.
That's great. I've been hoping that we would do that for a year, the whole time I've been on the board, but I know we've had turnover as we've gone. So this next decade or two while you're here, you're never allowed to go.
And to credit Dr. Howell, who's been on this for a while, but we're just going to have capacity, saying, right, monitor the whole system. Be patient for us.
But, well, I mean, with the portrait of the scholar, with some of the ways that you're putting the metrics together, it also lends itself, along with Abbott, to the student goal setting, where they're charting out their career in our schools, and they're setting their goals and achieving them. So I'll be really excited when we, one day have, every student has their, their own journey, their school career journey in their hands. Two final thoughts, the resource alignment, that's key. So you had mentioned ensuring that we've got the, honing in on some of the resources alignment under operational. So where we have need is where our dollars should go, like when we, as we looked at the curriculum, as we looked at where we might need additional support, that to me should be considered fluid as we're seeing the metrics move, that we're moving the dollars where we are providing that support. And then on page 25, with that coherence, community groups, so just put this in, in the, when we have capacity list, aligning our community groups as well. Who's coming into our schools, who's providing support, what are all of the different, I know like rotaries in, like we just, there's, I know there's no shortage of groups. Are they all aligned with what we want them to be doing? Are they all aligned to what our outcomes are desired for our students, if that's achievement? And knowing that they do different things, but can we just bring them in and focus them consistent with our goals and outcomes that we're seeking? Done.
How was Dr. Howell?
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Great input. And there is no rush or timeline, Keith. It's okay, it doesn't have to be done by nine o'clock.
I didn't tell you the school board rules.
Exactly, exactly. So thank you. Thank you for that valuable input. I'm just so excited with our work session and our goal is just, this is just all our house and all of our input we're going to get, what we need to get for our stakeholders. So I get excited about that. So, okay, so we have another update, because once again, our goal is to meet the needs of our boards, requests of our board, but as well as always being transparent and share when things change and what may come up. So we're presenting today to the board, there's a repurpose site update, and, and just to get some advice on you, from you on next steps. So John, go ahead, please, as well as Brian Severson, I'll be joining in as well, as well as Keith.
All right, thanks, Dr. Howell. So tonight, we'll be giving a brief update again on the Crestview repurposing and the recommendation on how the board would like us to proceed. As you're aware, this has been a significant change in our system, especially in staff and families at Crestview. Throughout the process of the repurposing, our goal is to make sure that families are cared for along the way. Our Crestview staff and families are being fully supported, and we think the process has been progressing along very smoothly so far. A very special thanks to Principal Stephanie Webster, the current principal at Crestview, as well as the teachers and staff who've really worked hard to make this a successful year, and to create a path of transition that respects the history and accomplishments that Crestview has done so far. So outcomes for tonight, we are going to review the process that led to the repurpose section of the Build a Better Future Plan, get everybody grounded down on the same page, so, so we can continue the conversation forward. Update the community-based spaces, an update on those at the repurpose site and how they'll be used. Understand why there's a proposal to build a new facility versus renovate the current facility, and determine directions and next steps moving forward with architects. So we're going to start with history. Let's take a look at some of the history, why, and why behind the need to repurpose the building. So this has been a relatively exhaustive process that was followed with many years of research that brought the district to this point. Staff, students, parents, caregivers, and community members have been a part of this process. The Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee, or ECMAC, has been studying our enrollment patterns and capacity and billing use, and has identified recommendations to address both the undercapacity and overcapacity enrollment situations, specifically there are undercapacity schools in Brooklyn Park and growing schools at overcapacity areas growing. ECMAC and six other focus groups, such as Career and Technical Education and Magnet, provided recommendations for the Build a Better Future Plan, that included several facility improvements and the repurposing of a school or schools. The Oversight Task Force, again, which some of you are all members of in this room, reviewed that work and made the final recommendations to the school board, using criteria in alignment with the district's mission and values. The criteria used included equitable impact, fiscal responsibility, district-wide alignment of standards, capacity, long-term impact, program improvement, communication, engagement, and flexible adaptable spaces. This finalized Build a Better Future Plan solidified the decision to move forward with an elementary for repurposing. The 2023's Build a Better Future Plan shared that an elementary school would be repurposed to serve pre-kindergarten grades, enrichment, and community-based programming needs. After much research and consideration, including Build a Better Future and the Enrollment and Capacity Advisory Committee, Crestview Elementary was the site chosen. This means Crestview's kindergarten through five students and staff will be moving schools in the fall of 2025, for the start of the 25-26 school year. Crestview, why? Why was Crestview chosen? Crestview specifically was chosen for a variety of reasons that include its centralized location to neighborhood schools, opportunities to expand and offer more community services, and a lower student enrollment or impact that had reached unsustainable levels. To give you an understanding of that today, there are 185 students in that school today. Students that currently attend in Crestview this school year have had the opportunity to choose a nearby elementary school to continue their learning for the fall of 25 and their remaining elementary years. Three schools that families were able to choose from were Eddenbrook Elementary School, Fair Oaks Elementary School, and Zane Wood Community Esteem School. Expansive learning opportunities and supports are of course available at these schools, like any other school in our district. And the choice was needed before winter break. Noted on the slide are the approximate numbers of students who've chosen each of these three schools. We needed that information before winter break to, to feed into the enrollment information that we provided to you earlier. Transfer dictation will be provided to all three of these school options. And though in-district transfer and open enrollment families will continue to provide their own transportation to Crestview, but if they're optioning to another school from Crestview, we'll transport, pick them up from there and take them.
And if anyone's wondering why that number doesn't add up to 183, it's because 50 of the students are going to middle school next year. So they didn't need to choose an elementary school, just as an FYI. So we did get, all the families did turn in their choice, which was amazing, that all, all the students did that. So that's why there's a little bit of discrepancy in numbers, just as an FYI. They already automatically matriculate up into middle school, the 50, fifth graders.
And just to let you know, these students will not be impacted by the ballot rechange in 2026. They will not need to move again.
Okay, so as we've shared in the weeks and months prior, there are some programming plans in place for the Crestview repurposing. Space, however, still exists to offer more opportunities in addition to the initial needs and commitments that we talked about during the referendum time.
in addition to the initial needs and commitments that we talked about during the referendum time. This fact was shared with our community last spring as well, along with an opportunity to provide feedback on potential directions. The feedback has helped the team with creating a full repurposing plan. So I'm going to take just a few minutes to talk about how the feedback opportunity was shared and what the results were. So this opportunity was shared in a number of different ways and places, including mailing even to the Crestview attendance area. So those are, those will be to any families in that area, those with and without students attending our schools. District communications, including our e-news, web, and social media platforms, our Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center School communications included in their e-newsletters, website, social media, and our master application text messages. There are also graphic displays near entrance at both our Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center Schools. Flyers were there as well. They were displayed on bulletin boards, available for pickup in main offices, and then passed out in personal events, for instance, like a PTL meeting or end-of-the-year gathering from last spring. Community and communications included this in their e-news web and social as well. Our community engagement team, our FACE, partnered with us, and our multilingual communication team partnered with us to get this out in different languages. The cities of Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center welcomed our flyers and communications and shared those out in ways that they were able to. And then our media partners, the hyperlocal CCX Sun Post and Preston News captured this as well. Something, so a tool called Dot Exchange helped to gather the input. This gives participants the ability to anonymously share their ideas, their thoughts, and rate the ideas of the other participants. We had 249 participants in total. There were 97 dots, and then there were 2,362 readings of all the participants' thoughts, so very high on the reading portion. Those that are on the slide are some of the high-level themes that were shared through the idea of that exchange opportunity, and they're in no particular order, but after-school programs, family counseling services, special needs support, adult English classes, early childhood education, STEAM education, tutoring services, community gathering spaces, mental health support, outdoor educational spaces, cultural immersion programs, indoor recreational facilities, job placement services, and parent education programs. I'm now going to turn it over to Brian to talk through how we've shaped the programming based on our needs and commitments, as well as the feedback.
All right. Thanks, Kate. So as previously shared, the building will transition from an elementary school to an educational site serving pre-kindergarten grades, enrichment, and community-based programming needs. So some of the new school board members, one of the things we need to follow is for a repurposing of a site, it needs to have an educational component moving forward. That's why you see the pre-K grade levels that stay, even though it's no longer a K through five building, there's a pre-K component, and that's why you see the 125 seats approximately. And in this particular case, when we talk about pre-K, we're really talking about four-year-old programming for that component of it. So with the pre-K grade component, we're very excited, envision to provide an innovative heritage learning model focused on cultural immersion, centering indigenous, long East, West African, and Spanish cultures. That's in partnership with our American Indian Education Program, the American Indian Cultural Center. This proposed site will set to become the permanent home of our American Indian Culture Center, featuring a curated library boasting over 1,000 texts authored by American Indians and housing the American Indian Education Department. The department will offer experiential learning opportunities based on Dakota and Ajibway lifeways and partner with our early childhood programming, which I think is exciting. Also, the community programming could include, but not be limited to, enrichment for adults and youth, community gathering spaces, opportunities to engage with partners around access to the building and outdoor space, and others from ideas collected in the design process. And designated, and I'll talk a little bit more about designated multi-use space rooms exist to offer more opportunities in addition to these needs and commitments we identified. And Tanya, I made a note, when you mentioned like community groups aligning to what we do, I made a little note to that, because I think that's an interesting way to think about it, what groups might we partner with, that could use that as a hub. We already have some examples. Brooklyn Bridge Alliance for Youth is certainly a group we partner with. We've got Maple Grove Community Gymnasium, which is a community partnership. We've got Zane Wood Community Center, which is a partnership helping primarily middle school and high school youth. And then, I forgot what other one I just said. Maple Grove Community Gym, did I say?
Yeah.
There was a third one I was thinking of. Oh, the Northwest Family Service Center, where we have the enrollment center. In Hennepin County, right? So we have some examples, I think, in the school district already. We're at different points in time. We've taken an opportunity to maximize use out of building and create community partnerships. And I made a note, a former coworker of mine named Margaret Boyer, she had a great phrase I've always stolen, selfish altruism. How do you create, contribute to the greater good while also advancing what your goals are, right? So I think that there's some possibilities with community groups there. So needless to say, I'm excited about the original feedback we've already received from community groups, but also pairing that with some of the areas that we think we have specifically for district needs, including a production kitchen at a school that has an opportunity to do that. So I did want to take a minute to just talk about the next slide. Multi-use spaces, it sounds kind of obvious, but a multi-use space is exactly what it says, a space that can be used for multiple things. So it's, in other words, it's not permanently fixed, right? So this is not, a sheet of ice is typically used for hockey or broom ball. It's pretty fixed. It's not going to be used for your school board work session, right?
It could be fun.
Wouldn't work. Might keep us awake at 9:30, but it might not work, right? This is a multi-use space, right? This space is used for many things. So one of the things that I think is important about multi-use spaces is it allows ample opportunities. It could be senior programming in the afternoon. It could be an early childhood family education program for parents with infants in the morning. It could be an after-school chess club in the afternoon, and at night, it could be a gathering space for a community group. And on the weekend, as many of you know, we already have seven faith-based communities who utilize our school buildings every weekend for their services, right? So a multi-use space allows those wide range of activities that could happen there, but it also allows us to adapt if community needs should ever change, right? So like, right now, we've captured, I think Kate and the team has done an amazing job of capturing as much information as we can through thought exchange and doing some pre-work, but that doesn't mean we would stop asking the community what they need, right? So think about, I've jotted down a couple of examples. Does everyone know that Arbor View Early Childhood Center didn't always exist? It used to be Maple Grove City Hall, right? So things change. We used to have a teen pregnancy program at the OALC that community ed ran for young people who had infants and early childhood and wanted to attend high school. Pregnancy rates, I think thankfully went down dramatically, and that's changed. So some things come in, some things go out. We didn't always have driver's education in secondary schools, and now we do. So I think, for me, those are examples of when you create additional multi-use spaces, it allows you to adjust and adapt to what might be the changing community needs. So I would, I'm glad that in our planning, we have not, I like to use the phrase, we haven't put everything in dark pen. Like, it's not like you walked through every room and said, this is a dark pen, this is only what it would be. We've created multi-use spaces in order to adapt to community needs. So the next page of Kate, thank, or John, or Kate, whoever moved the slide, I think we've, I've already mentioned the family and community engagement team. They would be located potentially at this site, and they would help generate community engagement activities up there. Community group initiatives, we've already talked a little bit about that. Brooklyn Bridge Alliance, this last couple of years has done an amazing program called Youth on Boards. You know, and we even have a student cabinet now with the superintendent. You know, those are examples of initiatives that haven't always existed in communities that we could add. And certainly, I already mentioned after-school, but we also think there's an opportunity with multi-use spaces and design to create some large group staff development and training areas that we could utilize for our own purposes, instead of renting out spaces like we have to do now, as well as open it up to some community groups. So the last thing I would say that I would add to this, besides being excited about the opportunity to expand opportunities in our community, I also believe having a early childhood hub on the east side versus only in Maple Grove like we currently have would be amazing. And we know that once you establish these types of programs, it starts to become a more known location and attracts more people, right? Because they know they can depend on it. It's there. So that's just briefly some of the current programming ideas that have come up through public feedback and staff input through district needs. So thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Okay, so encircling back, we took all that information, we sat down with our architects, and they started planning the space and said, okay, here's all the ideas, here's all the things that you see are your needs, and we want to put those within the box that exists today as Crestview, knowing that at the time when we started, we knew, we had a general budget set through Build a Better Future, and then we said, okay, how we, can we fit these programs in, and how do we do that? And how do we make them, how do we meet the needs of the programs as much as the space meet the needs and still being able to live within it? So this is the original view of what the architects came up with. Now, when you set an initial budget, you're making some assumptions. And we made some assumptions of what we knew about the building at the time. When we got in there, opened up ceiling tiles, went down in really creepy tunnels, things like that, we discovered a whole lot more information that really changed what we can do. And that's one of the big reasons why we're back, is because this isn't what we originally said. We uncovered information, and we need to share that with the board, so we can together make a good decision. So from what was originally proposed, to the Oversight Task Force with BDF, to what was uncovered once we went in deep on the design, a number of things changed. Administration is committed to maintaining transparency and fiduciary responsibility with the school board, and so it was determined that we need to have this conversation to explain what happened and to make a recommendation for next steps. As we got further into that process, our architects and engineers discovered significant structural and mechanical issues within the building that are going to make the modifications that we initially had hoped to be extremely expensive. In addition to the other amenities that we had wanted and needed to support the program, also carried with them their own additional significant costs, all those added up to what ended up being just about $10 million over the initial 16 or so million dollar budget. Because of this, the project actually crossed a tipping point, where the experts we worked with, from our architects and our building company, ICS, recommended that we stop the process of renovation and consider the process of rebuilding. MDE actually has an established guideline that they use to recommend that. Their guideline is, if you take the value of the building and the land and what's in it, and if your renovation cost exceeds 60%, MDE's recommendation is you tear down and start up. And we feel we cross that. We have not, I meant, again, in full transparency, we have not done a formal assessment of what that building's worth, but in some informal things of looking at, what is a 15-acre plot of land on Zane Wood in the middle of Brooklyn Park worth? It's a decent amount of money in the building. We're going to be in the 30 million range. So as we were doing our rough math, once we cleared $18 million, we cleared the tipping point. And so then the concern for, are we being fiscally responsible comes in. So that original bucket of 16 million or so dollars predominantly was coming out of our LTFM, our Long-Term Facility Maintenance Fund. As I said, the cost today exceed, if we wanted to do what was on that plan, we're in the, right at 25 million or so. In order to hit 25 million, we still have to take some things out. We originally wanted to put a separate bus loop in for the 25 little kiddos coming in. We can't do that and stay within that cost. There's a few other pieces we wanted to add. We talked about a community garden and better green space, and we're just not going to be able to do that within the dollar amounts we have available today. And really, when you come down to it, we are still renovating a 61-year-old building. And is 21 million, 25 million dollars worth the investment in that versus what we'll show you as the other option? So information based on renovating versus rebuilding. So in order to try to look at this apples to apples, we estimated, if we took the same square footage, roughly 59,000 square feet that Crestview is today, and we built a brand-new building on that site about that same size, including the demolition of the current building, our costs would come in, as estimated by our own construction firms, at about 27 million dollars. Now, when we went through when replacing programming within that building, we have more space than we need. We don't think we need 59,000 square feet. Having had a number of conversations with architects, we really feel that number comes in probably closer to 50,000 square feet. So 27 is a cap. That's the top we think it would cost to do anything. When we talked about the 25 million to renovate the building, that's 25 million based on what we know today. And the example I would give you is, this last summer, we walked into Brooklyn Middle School, we started doing demo, we got into the middle of the media center, and we found asbestos all over the place. Why? It's an older building. We thought we knew where it all was. We didn't. Guess what? We had a, almost a month delay to go in and a whole lot of expense and take out the asbestos, because we have to once we uncover it. We don't know what we're going to uncover at Crestview if we go in and renovate. It's an older building. You're, we can do the best we can, and the reason we originally chose ATS and R for the architect of that building is they built it. So they have the best plans of what should be there. Doesn't necessarily mean it's always how it was built. So typically, in a renovation, you have to have a much larger contingency than you do in a new build, because you're going to uncover stuff. So I think, I always go back to Dale Carlstrom, our Facilities Director, telling me about them out digging in the back of Park Center, and they have, you know, a big excavator, and they're digging up to put the turf fields in, and all of a sudden, they encounter something, and they scrape with the excavator, and they pull up an absolutely perfect, clean slate of tile. And what it was is a milking parlor that just simply got buried in the ground as an old farm. Well, that tile looked like it got laid two days ago. It was brand-new. Why? It's all asbestos. So we had to dig up this entire building, encapsulate the whole thing, and take it all up. Had no idea that was there. We were just digging in a field to put up a dome. So you never quite know what you're going to come up with, and that was in a grass field. So it just lends to the unknown piece of renovation. So today, as we're looking at this, we've only issued part of the bonds for all of Build a Better Future, just about half. Typically, when we're doing that, and what the voters have approved us to sell, it is broken into, again, the LTFM bucket, and then what's called the school building bond bucket. They can be used for different things. In order to maintain a zero impact on taxpayers, as we look at a rebuild recommendation, and because the timing still works, we can make the decision to say, we'll bond less for LTFM and not use the full tax impact available to us, and potentially, if needed, use other funding streams to get back to the authorized tax level. Again, not going over, and if everything is, we can potentially do this as a tax-neutral option. We're not asking anyone to increase taxes anywhere. We've already asked the money we're going to ask from our taxpayers. We don't need to ask for more. And we may not need to do anything. That's the other plus, is we have other funding sources that will be coming. When we issue bonds, we earn money that comes in with new bonds. The example I'll give you, the first round of bonds issued, there's something called a bond premium that many times comes in. We initially thought on $138 million, oh, $238 million bond that we did, we might get 10 or 11 million dollars in a premium. We got 25. We also do not intentionally ever allocate the interest that will earn on those bonds while they're sitting in our accounts waiting to be spent on anything until we know we need to. So, for example, the school building bond portion of that 238 million, we're sitting on the interest for that. That could be allocated into this bucket, so zero taxpayer impact. That could be allocated into this bucket, so zero taxpayer impact. Any new building bond, which the school building portion of the second one will be in the 123 million dollar range, and then there's the LTFM portion, we have to keep them separate. But any interest earned on that, 123 million dollars, which I think we estimate somewhere in the 7 to 8 million range, again, could be put into this pot if we wanted to. So, what's happening with this is we've kind of created a very unique opportunity with both timing and, so I'm glad we uncovered what we uncovered when we did, with both timing with where we are in funding our bond projects, and also this unique opportunity to create a multi-generational asset for both the district and the city of Brooklyn Park. Today, we have, in our inventory, if you look at our buildings as assets, we have an abundance of late 20th century elementary schools. What we don't have is early childhood, as Brian mentioned, community education, dedicated American Indian education space, and that multi-use flexible programmatic space that we would have the flexibility to be able to adapt and change based on the needs as they come and go. And this would provide that opportunity. So, next steps, based on a rebuild option, the next few weeks are critical for us. So, we have bids that are coming in. The biggest two come in on January 15th and January 21st. The new elementary schools bid comes in a week from tomorrow, and then Maple Grove High School additions a week after that. And then I wanna say by first part of March, we'll have Osseo Senior Highs. So, those are our three major projects. Depending on how those bids come in, if they come in, you know, even at or under, we're in a really, really good spot. We may, knowing that we also have these potential other funding streams coming to us, might not need to ask the board to do anything. But we wanna be transparent and tell you that there is the possibility that if things don't come in perfectly, we might. But if we do, it's still tax-neutral, it's still going to meet the needs of the district, and again, we still have that ability to say, "Here's a unique opportunity to provide an asset that the district really could use, Brooklyn Park could really use." And I think, especially for our community, you're resetting the clock on a 61-year-old building to bring. And just to have that now, here's your multi-generational 60, 70-plus years of a new asset that the district can use. Our goal, simply in this, is, and I'm hopeful that we can use what we have in alternative streams, that we would not have to ask the board for any action, but we, again, wanna make sure that you understand what we're looking at. Timeline-wise, kinda here's, if you were looking at the rebuild option, originally, Crestview was intended to go under construction right away in June or July. We cannot do that. It was originally intended that if it was going to be a renovation, we would reopen in the fall of '26, and we're now in at the fall of '27. Much like a new elementary, if you're doing a new building, it's roughly a one-year timeline. Now, we've already done three, three-plus months of the work. We've already figured out, design-wise, what can, what do we need in the building. So, that's just a matter of shifting gears and saying, "Okay, rather than fitting it in existing, you have an undrawn box, figure out what you wanna do." So, the, most likely this summer, construction would be demolition of the building. They would have to take that down. We do know there's asbestos in that building if we have to demolish it, so we can plan for that. The Crestview staff and students need to begin their new journeys starting in the fall of '25 here. Again, that new site's tentatively scheduled to open September 27th. And again, we will be sharing all that information on the progress through the district's Build a Better Future website, and more of that information coming. So, really, we're to a point of asking the school board to support a recommendation from the district. And from my perspective, as you know, you know, our district team, our financial team, we take incredibly great pride in ensuring that we are fiscally responsible to every dollar that our district spends. I tell people many, many times, when I sign my name on that audit, it means something, it means something to me, and I'm not gonna sign my name if I don't agree with what's on that. And I'm backing this with that same level of support to say that I would not make this recommendation, and this wouldn't come from our facilities team, our district team, if we didn't think this is the best option of that order. If we didn't think that it makes more sense to rebuild this and create a strategic asset for the district long-term, then put the money into renovating a building that, it just won't turn out the same way, you know? And again, it comes to that unique opportunity to say, "We can do something great, or we can do something," I hate using the term, but half-assed, and I feel like the repurpose part is gonna be a little half-assed. We're gonna put a little lipstick on a pig, we're gonna do the best we can, but we're not gonna do a great job. To me, Osseo Area Schools is here to do a great job, and the recommendation to rebuild is a great job. So, with that. Chair Thomas, I'll turn it back to you. Spies, Chair Thomas.
Thanks, John, again. Board members, comments, questions?
Yeah, I have a few questions, unless anybody wants to start things off. I'm not sure I started like getting here. So, you mentioned some of the specifics of the remediation class, or the additional class that we weren't expecting. It's the structural, mechanical, and then asbestos remediation, is that correct?
Yeah, structural's the biggest one. What's really unusual about this building, most buildings you can think of as a box. The outer walls are the strength of the building, right? In this building, like, if you have a sheet of paper and the outer walls are the strength, in this building, it's the inner walls that are the strength. So, the architect was telling us, "We could actually rip off the entire outside of the building and put all windows in, and it doesn't change the structure." Where our problem comes in is, we would like, you know, our pre-K classrooms are in the 12, 1500 square foot range. The classrooms in that building are 800 to 900 square feet. So, if we wanna make them that big, I don't have to move a major structural wall. I have to dig down 12 feet, put in a new footing in the middle of a room to build this wall back up, and now I have two. Well, I need six of those. So, that structural component is...
So, it's not necessarily integrity of the structure?
No, no, no. Yeah, thank you. I don't wanna, I don't wanna say there's anything unsafe about the building, there's not. It's just to modify it to the needs we're trying to do is just, you know, it's just not, it's so expensive. That system, that school is old enough that it has a, I mentioned the tunnels. So, the hallways are tunnels, and that's where a lot of the HVAC, some of the stuff runs. But they're dirt floor tunnels, there's nothing in them. If we wanna actually upgrade those to use that with modern equipment, we have to go and pour cement into those tunnels and seal them up. So, again, you're just talking these weird extra expenses you would never think in a normal situation, I'm going in to upgrade a boiler and all that, I don't think I have to pour a concrete floor underground, which you suddenly have to do in this particular situation. So, just the uniqueness of how the building was built and when it was built.
What's the typical life cycle for an ATSRR design? Like, in our school district, how long have they typically lasted?
I don't know if I can answer that, because it's the, you know, each architect is different, and they're, they typically build to the design that we gave direction to at the time, who was responsible for it. But, so now, I guess I'm not sure quite how to answer that.
Is that something we could find out from them? Like, what the projected life cycle was on this building?
We can ask if they, if they still have staff around or there at the time. I mean, this would've been designed in the early 60s. So, you know, most school builds, buildings that we see, you're gonna fall somewhere in that 20, 50 to 75 years. This is a typical, normal timeframe for a school, so we're right there. And part of that, too, is the understanding of, okay, if we're, we're in the sweet spot, right? We're close, it's still a viable building, is 25 million worth? Are we gonna buy 50 years for 25 million, or buy 30 years? Or are we gonna buy 10? Or 20? You know, so, again, it kinda costs benefit.
Then, the difference between '16 and '27 is pretty significant, aside from the funding streams that you mentioned. How can we justify that to our district, that it's an additional 11 million?
So, it's, to be clear, the '16 was the original budget. Today, if you wanna renovate that building, we're at '25. So, what we're comparing is, just stated apples to apples, is '25 to '27 of rebuild versus renovate. I'm sorry, renovated '25, rebuilt it, no more than '27. The '16, we can't do. We just can't do '16.
But, we'll just, sorry, the '25, though, doesn't get us all of the features that are in the '27, right? We just stopped estimating at '25, right? Is that what you said?
Yeah, we had, we kinda backed down to '25. Originally, our number came to almost '26, and then we said, "Okay, if we took out this bus loop, and we took out these spaces," and typically, when we start what's called value engineering, taking the way, we start outside and work our way in. So, with our new elementary that we did in a week, we did that exact same thing. We were a little over on where we thought our estimate would be, so we went outside and said, "Okay, well, we're not gonna put irrigation in the ground on the ball fields out there, we're not gonna put a softball field in. We're gonna take a few of those hundred thousand dollar costs here, a couple hundred thousand dollars there, we're gonna trim those down to not affect the school building." So, that's, we were doing the same thing. We're starting to take away stuff outside to work our way in, but you're still gonna have some programmatic issues, because there's, like, pre-K really needs dedicated drop-off. And so, we would have to be running buses through a common parking lot, which we try not to do.
So, those are all things that are still in the build, the '27?
The '27 build is comprehensive. Yep. Because essentially, having a clean slate, we're not dealing with a footprint where a building already exists. We can put the roads where we want, we can, we're truly clean slate. We'll start over with a pen and a pencil, a sheet of paper, and figure out what you wanna do on the property.
Could you tell me what kind of cost per square foot you're looking at for the clinic? Because those typically have a higher cost per square foot.
There is no, I guess I didn't address that. Originally, we were looking at the concept of a potential clinic at that site. The feasibility study we did with Park Niklet said that's not a feasible site. So, that is not on the table. There are, that's where, again, I guess we go kind of back to the multi-use thing. If we could partner with somebody, like a mobile dentist who needs just space to come in for a day, you know, or on Mondays and Fridays, we can figure that out in a multi-use space. Though, I don't think we're gonna design a specific space for it. Now, pre-K requires a nurse, so we'll have that type of a space, but that's, again, included in that.
And then what is the hotel?
So, a hotel is just meant to be an itinerary and staff hoteling space, where I can come in and pick space for the day.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's just kinda compacted, tight spaces. We have a few examples around here.
Yeah.
That's what that piece was.
So, oh, good. I'm very excited at the possibility of having a brand-new building and a site that we can start from scratch to meet the needs in Brooklyn Park. We just looked at enrollment data. If we were to look at the percent of student capture in Brooklyn Park, I would wager that it's well below the district average, because all those charter schools are pulling the students in Brooklyn Park away. Our most significant need in Brooklyn Park is achievement support. So, I'm excited at the opportunity that we need a new building in Brooklyn Park, and that this opportunity has presented itself. With a new site, investing at 27 million dollars, it leads me to ask a different set of questions as to what belongs in that site that's gonna best meet the achievement needs. We know that the needs in Brooklyn Park are really centered around teens. That's not to say pre-K isn't important to be there, especially with what's required by MDE and the shifting of the other sites. But I think outside of the pre-K, we should be really re-engaging the community with a different set of questions about, it's not about repurposing an existing building, but how do we reimagine what's truly gonna move the dial and impact students in Brooklyn Park the greatest? So, I'm fully supportive of a new site, but I would say that I don't agree with the same plan going in at that site anymore, that I think that we should re-engage.
I just wanna throw out, even at the time when we were considering it for Brooklyn Park, that the city manager of Brooklyn Park was saying, "Could we give them space for head start?" Because they have several head starts that are looking for a place for their younger kids. So, Brooklyn Park does have a need for pre-K, and I think if we're looking to address the needs of academics or what's coming in, I, you know, I just think more children, if you're looking at four-star, what those babies are getting at four-star, that the kids in Brooklyn Park should be able to have that opportunity as well, because they're just coming in at kindergarten, and they don't have that 4K, pre-K experience, and they do come in behind their classmates. So, I just wanted to share that.
Okay. Can you remind me what question was asked on Thought Exchange to, was it feedback?
While she's looking at, isn't, just clarifying question, isn't the remediation of the community center at Zane Wood a teen edition? Is that what that is?
While you're looking that up as well, did all of the feedback opportunities direct everybody to Thought Exchange, or was there any in-person engagement? Was there, you know, when we did the strategic plan, we went out to the community and had in-person interaction and engagement, did all of these avenues go back to Thought Exchange?
They, that's where, like, the feedback was coming in, but there were some in-person, like, connections to try to get people to fill in with Thought Exchange. So, there were some, so like, the PTO meetings are a great example of that. Or if people are coming into the main offices at schools, that's a great example of that as well. So, all the data was coming in in that direction, but there were some in-person engagement to try to encourage people to fill that out. So, we shared, like, a couple paragraphs of information on, like, where we were at and the timeline and things like that, and we really wanted to have community engagement. But like, the main question that was asked was, "How do you believe the additionally available space should be utilized at the repurpose site, indoors and or outdoors?"
Thank you. So, to Director Prince's point, I agree with the recommendation to build a new site versus renovating. And the last thing I wanna do is downplay the importance of pre-K in Brooklyn Park. I agree that I think this increase in costs is a game-changer. This isn't the original request or information that we presented to the public. And so, for me, I look at this new amount, and I do think we need to go back to the community and give them the opportunity to reimagine what this space could look like in Brooklyn Park and what those needs are, particularly as Director Prince mentioned, to help with student achievement. I know that there's a new building that's receiving funds right now, the Teen Center, that addresses some of the needs as it relates to teens in Brooklyn Park, but 25, 27 million dollars specifically for pre-K and the American Indian Education Center, which doesn't seem to take up a significant amount of space. I guess I'm struggling with, I'm struggling with this new 25-plus million dollar number. So, yeah, I'm not comfortable moving forward with the existing plan as is.
It's like, one thing to think about with the pre-K in there. Statutorily, because you're repurposing the site, you have to do grade reconfiguration. So, pre-K is part of grade reconfiguration to keep that as a repurpose site, which would potentially change board action if that moves.
You're not saying not to have pre-K?
No, not at all.
You're saying, you're saying to keep pre-K. Yeah, keep that part of it.
And even the emphasis on that, it looks like our, entering kindergarten rates are plateauing or declining at the worst case. What does, how does that impact our investment there? Anything that kind of ties into what you're saying, Thomas? So, that would be something to chew on, definitely.
And I would like, I mean, I support the rebuild 1,000%. I do wonder, I feel like regardless whether we did the repurpose or rebuild and the significant increase in budget, and, you know, I, we're at the county, so I know that happens all the time when we rebuild the buildings, and there's such an increase, I feel like, you know, we're gonna have to somehow communicate to the community what it is. And I would imagine questions would come up about, well, what else, what is gonna go in there, and how do we, you know, I feel like every time, when I think about World's Best Workforce and all these reports, it's like, you see the disparities in achievement over and over again. So, like, what's gonna move the dial? So like what's going to move the dial? And immediately I thought about like, what are these achievement zones doing? The North Side Achievement Zone or the Harlem Achievement Zone to really bring in all these different services to really advance achievement? And could we be kind of the next achievement zone, whatever that looks like, inclusive of pre-K and things like that? Because I mean, at the end of the day, we want to ensure that our students have everything that they need. We're not leaving like one ounce on the table to succeed in their life. We know that there's disparities in our education systems, particularly in our district. So I do agree, I mean, I think that there is this opportunity. And I don't know, when we talk about engagement, what would that do to the timeline of things? I mean, that's, you know, and, but I think it's kind of, I think, I, for me, especially being newly elected, I feel like that's my due diligence as a school board member, elected official, to be able to have that conversation in our community. Again, I do have a question about the pre-K, and I totally support pre-K, but like why is there no focus on African-American students? I guess that's my question. I see that, you know, there's native, Spanish-speaking, West African. I'm just really curious about African descendants of slaves in particular, knowing that that particular population is often overlooked. And that's a little concerning to me that I'm even thinking of like Freedom School or, you know, things like that, which we don't have anymore, but we did. And that's a highly successful whole school program. And so I think I'm aligning with Tanya or Director Prince and Brooks around kind of, how do we advance, how do we ensure that we are addressing achievement in our district? Because we talk about it all the time, and this is kind of this golden opportunity to do that. And I know I'm newer to the conversation again, but if you're asking about my preference, I wouldn't want to rebuild.
Well, and I think one of the good things to think about on that is, is, so we had an architect who said, okay, here, I'm going to cram all this stuff in. And he said, great, throw that stuff away, start over. We can have that conversation in the design process and say, okay, what needs to be in the building now? Do we have the right, does something need to change? You know, we can still have that conversation. I don't want to say that we are limited, but we still have that ability. And I think that's just our due diligence of doing the job right in building it, that we do that. The other point I wanted to bring in, when you're thinking about the, I don't want people to get hung up on sixteen million versus twenty-five million. Within the authority the board and the voters granted us within Build a Better Future, we can do this. That's what you need to focus on. It's my job and my team's job to make sure that we figure out the difference between sixteen and twenty-five or twenty-seven and make that happen. And what I'm telling you today is we think we can do that. Otherwise, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
And part of it as well, we're looking at achievement is, Brian didn't speak to that too, though, as well as having areas for parent and child education classes. If you go to West Side, you see that all the time. And you go to the West Side and you can walk in, you have parents in one room while they're watching their kids in another room play with the teachers, and they're playing it together. We don't see that on these. So how much more can we develop that in, you know, providing skills and giving achievement and giving experiences the same as others are experiencing as well? Because I think if sometimes, we, and well, of course, we'll, no, I'm just talking, of course, whatever. But I think if you weigh by second grade, you weigh by third grade, you're trying to catch up. You're constantly on a hamster grill where you're trying to catch up, where to catch up. Where do we start? You start at birth, read to your child in your belly is where you start, right? You start with putting books in her hands and things like that. So when you go in, any teacher can tell you when you go in kindergarten, who's at pre-K and who is not at pre-K. So, you know, just to think of that as well, it's like how do we give our parents the same opportunities that some of our parents on the West Side has as well? Where they're able to go and have these parent-child educational classes?
Can I? I don't know if you're able to answer this one, John, but roughly of the fifty thousand square foot, I know we had looked at that originally, about how much of that would still lend itself to like flexible multiple space? I mean, so there might be some opportunities, additional opportunities, bring in some community-based programs or maybe some other programs that aren't necessarily permanent, but could be permitted into the school so that is either during the summer or after school or some of the other kind of programming.
Trying to remember, we're in the, a third of the building is, has a flexible component to it.
At least. More, yeah.
I mean, there's things like a production kitchen, is it absolutely not flexible for partners, an example? We can't let the public use a production kitchen. But we've talked about creating a, a similar to a fax lab that we have in school, creating that type of flexible space as a kitchen flexible space that can be used for ethnic cooking or American Indian Ed can bring in and have meals that their families are cooking onsite there as well or learn how to cook things, you know? So you still have that flexibility to use it a bunch of different ways. So I think that's, that's a big piece of it in knowing, you know, as a district, we rent space all over the place. Can we capture some of that? Maybe this, that's a good idea here. Maybe shifting focus to something else would be a better idea. I don't know. Again, we're happy to explore all those things and say, what's the right way to use this? Because what's most important is again, we build it right and do not exceed that budget, that we know that, hey, no, what, our statutory authorization is a absolute cap and we're not going to pass that.
Yeah, I was taking some notes too, and I think back to kind of our multi-use spaces or focus areas, you know? I, I'm just trying to sound precise. You know, we can make sure our multi-use spaces have some academic support focus areas, you know? I'm just going to state Brian, a Brian opinion here. Academic achievement is for the K-12 academic school day. That's where the primary responsibility for achievement is. We can, we can create these other programs, whether it's tutoring programs, some literacy initiatives to meet our read well by third grade after-school programs. Chelsea just brought up Freedom Schools, different cultural immersion programs, scheme-focused after-school programs that support science, technology, and math. You know, I think, I think that's doable. So I guess I, you know, for me, I'm, I'm right, I wrote down the word academic support focus. I know you, you used, all of you, I'm just talking out loud because I'm trying to hear what you said and capture it. But you know, you're using the word like achievement zones or achievement. I'll just have to, I'm just letting you know.
It's a proven, it's a model. So they have parent and youth education, they have academic K through twelve or college or whatever beyond academic supports, family achievement coaches, as per financial mobility, as emotional and physical health and wellness. I mean, those are the components that seem to kind of advance and move the dial in terms of the success of not only our students, but Dr. Heil, you said, to our families? Because I think that's such an important piece to the, you know, that parent and youth education.
Yeah, I agree with Director Dawson that when you study the achievement zones, and we, this, to me, it's a unique opportunity we haven't had before. And I've been interacting with a number of groups that come to Rotary and talk about the limitations they have because of not being designated as an achievement zone versus work that's being done elsewhere in the metro. So if we could, really could have stepped back and say, if we could do anything we wanted to, what would that really be that is a true legacy for the community and for the students? And the, as Director Dawson pointed out, like this is about a surround. So achievement isn't, in these models, it's not during the school day only, it's a full surround. So I'd be more comfortable if we were really intentional with the programming that says, it's this programming for these outcomes comprehensively, rather than coupled together with, well, maybe this group could use this space or that group could use the space.
Yeah, I'm, okay.
It's like anchored in.
I'm feeling like there's a big question mark right now around the multipurpose and flex spaces. And given, again, and they said not to get hung up in the increase in cost, but to have this flex space that has a huge question mark. We don't quite know what we're going to use it for. I don't love that either, as we talk about being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And then I think the other thing to, you know, Director Princess Point, we, it's really how we communicate to the public is really important. How we phrase things, how we create space for them to provide feedback is really important. And both as a board member and as a community member, I don't feel like we ever really got an option to really imagine what the space could look like from the ground up. Because it was always presented as a repurposed space. And the district was very clear in that communication all the way through. So yeah, I, I think we, if we do need to take a step back, which I do think we do, I don't want us to rush through that to then end up in the same place that we're at right now. I'd like us to actually take the time and have those discussions with the public and what we need to do in that part of the district. And particularly given the board's concerns today, how we can use the space to truly invest in the youth on that side of the district and increase our investment in student achievement.
So how, I just want to make sure we're all understanding. So how do you use this space, the flex spacing? Are we still saying?
The entire building.
Okay, so if we, are we saying that is, because the board would have to vote, if we're not talking having another educational program, you're going to have to vote to close the building?
I think we've said consensus is that the hundred and twenty-five seats should be there. It's what is the rest of the building?
Okay, that's what I'm trying to find.
Yeah, pre-K, yes.
Yeah, we're all, we're all.
Yes, I got that, okay, okay.
Yeah, I heard that.
So then go back and get feedback in regards to the rest of the space.
Do we have a date on the calendar that we need to approve this recommendation?
Well, so, so here's where timing is a bit of a problem. As I mentioned with a, the other new building we're building, we started planning that thirteen months ago. And the bid's come next week. Now, we kind of already are two or three months ahead of that number, but essentially we need to be planning this in the next three weeks. We need to be started on the planning process. Now, because we're starting over, we have to have a conversation with architects still. From a district's perspective, you know, we have two architects. The reason ATSNR was chosen on this building is because they had a history in this building. We would like to, if we're going to go to a clean slate, and again, that conversation can still happen of what that clean slate looks like. But we want to talk to both of our architects and say, what's the right fit here for the clean slate? And what's the, you know, direction? So we may take the opportunity. And that's probably the most pressing thing we need to do is, can we engage architects to pick one to say, this is what we're going to move forward with? And in that process, we can be gathering more information and starting to look at that. I don't know if we can stay on the timeline of fall of twenty-seven, but again, this isn't necessarily, we don't have to open the whole building at the same time yet. You know, the goal is from a standpoint of, we have, we have three years. So from June of twenty-five, when the building temporarily closes, we have till June of twenty-eight. That's, that's to stay within statute and not even do something different.
So we could technically approve a new build, but say we want the programmatic intention to be rethought as you're going through the design process? So we can do both? It doesn't have to be immediate?
Yeah, as long as you understand the flexibility, and we'll, you know, keep bringing this to you as we get farther into it, that I might not be able to hit a, you know, day after Labor Day in twenty-twenty-seven, open date for the whole building. Now, there's nothing wrong with saying, we can do that for the pre-K. The rest of the building, we're still working.
But does, does pre-K have to be the first opening? That has to be December by twenty-seven?
It doesn't have to be twenty-seven, it just has to be before June of twenty-eight.
Okay, thank you.
We're, in general, we're trying to wrap all projects by the end of twenty-seven. But again, it comes back to do the right thing. Don't let a timeline screw up the right thing. I think as a board, we can make the decision that's more important to do the right thing.
Is twenty-seven the cap, but it, with the funding that we have, or if we are reimagining this, is there still space above that? Because I don't want to, if we're going to reimagine it, I don't want to necessarily say it has to be twenty-seven million if we have room.
We have options, but, but options may require board action. Again, I will say to you, none of those options will cause a tax impact to anyone. But there are levers to make those options happen that do require certain board, things like a public hearing. Example I'll give you is, so today we have eight million dollars sitting in the bond pot for parking lots. The new one, the two parking lots at the new school, the additional parking lot at Baker Grove, the new parking lot at Oseo, so on. We have the ability, board, to just say, we're going to approve an abatement bond. An abatement bond can only be used for parking lots. It's a really dumb special bond that's there. All we have to do is have a single hearing for public comment to say, here's what we'd like to do. We know because of what we'll play with bonds that won't have any tax impact to us. We just have to go through the levers to make that legal for MDE. And then that frees up this eight million dollars that now goes to the abatement bond piece for parking lot. And I can now put that in my chunk of free, you know, much more flexible school building bond money. So that's like the lever that I'm talking about. We have a couple of those, two or three of those that we could actually, just it kind of depends on what ultimately is in the building. But we've talked with Ellers, our financial advisor, they're well aware of those. In an ideal world, we would come in and premium looks great. We don't have to, you don't have to exercise anything else, and we still fit the cap. But you have options. There's, it's the benefit of my job is there's some creativity in being able to find those things and stay within that magic cap that we say, you know, our tax, the funny thing is legally, when we said two-hundred-and-twenty-three million dollars, legally, it's a tax percentage that that sets for us. And as our tax base grows, the percentage goes down automatically. So my percentage is still there. So growth helps us. All those things help us to maintain that level, but that's our statutorily approved level by the boards if we don't grow up. So, so long and short, it's lots of options for the board. And this is not a rushed decision, like we don't, we're not going to sell bonds for at least another year. So we're not in a rush to do that. Ellers was telling us we could even wait another eighteen months if we want, it just depends. But it may be in our best interest to sell them sooner so we can earn more interest out of them.
I just want to chime in from a staffing standpoint, right? And I know this discussion is surrounding repurpose versus rebuild. But I just want to make sure that, right, when we're, when John's talking about options, that we still remember that, you know, we do need that decision, you know, or to know if there's still a commitment to moving forward in the same timeline or whatever that timeline's going to be, because there are staffing implications. And we have been working towards making sure that we look out for the staff that we have and that they are guaranteed spots. And we do, you know, we're working on that now. So I just want to remind everyone about that when we talk about options, that there are staffing implications that we have to address.
Yeah, I don't think we have a preference to be suddenly another year out, so we have a sense of urgency.
So just to summarize and make sure we have the right, so giving permission to go ahead and talk to the architects, maintaining the hundred-and-twenty-five, the pre-K program, but get more feedback from our public. Pacific Programs is there, we don't want flex spacing? I'm just trying to make sure I understand that part.
I mean, honestly, I would like a really well-thought-out, a plan from the district on what would really accelerating achievement for our scholars in the east side of the district look like if we could do anything that we wanted to. Like, like how would we, I would like to see us create an achievement zone.
Yeah, like why don't we meet with NASS, like Sandra? I mean, we should, maybe you can tell us, you know, I mean, like just to, what, Dr. Heil, like, I mean, what are those components to kind of advance that? And like, and I mean, it sounds like some of it's already like was planning to maybe be as pieced in this building anyways. But I do like that idea of like, whatever we do should be anchored and be really intentional. And whatever organization you partner with, work with, I, I mean, I think that they have to kind of, kind of have to have this first star to kind of go after. I don't think it feels good to be like this organization, this organization, this organization because it's an awful little server.
Well, you're, so it, it sounds like one of the things the board, this is a move from more of a community center-based site to an achievement center, is what I'm, I'm just trying to summarize what I'm hearing, right?
Okay, that's what I'm thinking too.
Right, because flex, all the things that we've, so whether or not everyone agrees we got enough community feedback, I'm not going to argue that, but the programming that we brought forward was based on the community feedback we received, right? So that, so I would just state that. And so that was. And so that was, that's the focus of a community-based, that's why you do some flex spaces, right? So that you have, you can meet whatever needs the community's bringing forward. But if we're, the request is to have a more academic support feature, then that looks different. That might not even get a ton of community feedback, frankly.
I was gonna say, like, do we want to present it as that? Do you want to present it as we're thinking of putting more achievement-specific programming in here and what will that be?
Might change the question.
We very much had, I mean, like in our explanation, it was very much community building kind of specific.
I think the question.
Because we talked about those community education specific needs, that's what it was talked about.
I think the question I get hung up on is when, if, when it was phrased, were people only thinking of repurposing the building, not a new build? Like, if you had anything you wanted, what would it be? And versus like using an existing elementary school?
So do we want to open the question up to if you could dream of anything? If you want to dream of anything?
Let's think on that, because like then you're gonna get like, we want our, we want our aquatic center.
Oh, don't go there.
Well, we did get that.
We did get that.
If the focus is to drive achievement, you're right, though. That may not be crowdsourced, but it, we should better understand how the community sees for their students, for their kids in the, in that area, what would best drive achievement for their family. So I do see the difference between community source versus a district strategic direction.
And maybe it isn't a big community, maybe it is being strategic of meaning where there's, you know, there's lots of organizations in Brooklyn Park and, and maybe it's just intentional kind of a convening of, you know?
So it's more assigning those flex spaces to groups like that and then keeping some of that, like a gym or whatever, you'd still have that, it would just be identifying specifics of the programs.
So it's like, I guess, I'm just paying off, I don't know where this is coming from, but it's, 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 it's like I had the opportunity to open, help open up a state school in Robbins. So the two questions was whatever we did was, how are we different and what if? Right? So what if, what can we do, what if? So now I see what you're saying now, that, okay, we have this whole new brand new building, what if? And how are we different in doing it in an achievement-type way? So our, our team could easily research, you know, the different achievement zones, North Side Achievement. We'll have to figure out how to communicate with families because it's more precise now, so.
Yeah, and the good news is on, you know, like NAS, for example, you know, they do early childhood, they do after-school programming, right? So a number of the components that they have, they have beens, they've got beats and lines, I can name all the programs they do at NAS, right? So, and they have some health focus, you could have some career, they have some career focused stuff, they have some health, mental health components, right? So that's more, it's.
Literally, I just took that out of the work, these are all the things that they, that is part of, those are all the components.
Yeah, we cheated, we looked.
Yeah. My mom worked at NAS for fourteen years.
Huge, full surprise, seriously.
It is, I just think it is a golden achievement.
All right, we're on it, we have our assignment. Just so real quick, the board meeting calendar review, particularly for our new school board members. This is always a working document, it's always not totally solidified what's there. So it kind of gives you an idea of what's coming up. On the fourteenth, we have our PD next week at Northwest Suburban. And I think Sherry, I don't know if you gave it back to her, she needs to know what you wanted for dinner. Unless what we have in our regular meetings as well, you'll get that in the school board updates. In February, we are going to have our board work session at Northview Middle School. And we're gonna try to do that a little bit more, we're gonna open it up to you to be able to take a tour thirty minutes beforehand. So this is our way to be able to allow the board to see all the work that's been done and get out into other sites. Doesn't mean we'll do it every month, but this will be our first one. And we're excited about in March, March eleventh, we're gonna go deep into committee work. What's the committee, what's an advisory, what's our role, what needs to be there, what? So we're gonna do a lot of work around that in talking with the chair vice chair from last year. So this is a working document, if there's any like topics or ideas, if something else you want, you just freely say and we'll try to get that worked in.
One more thing, you have these, the two-seventy-nine foundation, I'm expecting all board members to purchase their discounted ticket so we can all sit at a table with as many people as we want to bring that can be around the tables, the next ones.
My cowboy hat came in the mail today. Seriously.
Use your social media to push this.
Western wear, western wear.
Doring twenties, laughter.
I'm staying in my new leather suede cowboy boots, I'm all ready.
My next lesson's very healthy.
I do.
Yeah, she has to dress western.
Bring my horse and I'm serious.
Never know with them.
I always do the most, yeah.
That would be amazing. Contest litter for sure.
That's like very the rival, yeah, the surprise.
Not a great thing.
All right, this work session is adjourned at nine oh eight PM.